Good evening, everyone. It is 6:15 in time for our Perry municipal authority meeting. It is August 4th, 2014. I do call the meeting to order. Roethlisberger, please.
Stroller.
Here.
Dow.
Here.
Moxley.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Norman.
Nation.
Here.
Wade.
Present.
Warner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
All right.
I do declare a forum and ask that we have our implications.
Let's pray. Father, we love you and we thank you for this day. Thank you, Lord, that we get to gather together and discuss the business of the city. Father, we ask that you would guide and lead us in every direction. Thank you, Father, that you are showing us your direction. And, Lord, we honor you. We give you praise for that. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. We will go through our consent agenda first. It is the first item on this list. Is there anything within consent agenda that needs discussion from anyone?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion, second. Roethlisberger, please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pertaining to the PMA, is there any comments from the audience? Any comments from the audience or the PMA? Next item, seeing none. Item five, proclamation commendation reports and inquiries by the governing body. Counsel. Seeing none. We are going to recess now to convene into Perry City Council.
Motion, approve.
Second.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
We're doing that because items on the council business pertain to the PMA and therefore we go back much easier with none motion later. Roethlisberger, please.
Stroller.
Here.
Dow.
Here.
Moxley.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Norman.
Here.
Nation.
Here.
Wade.
Present.
Warner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Consent agenda, item number one, items A, B, and C. Are any part, any one of those or parts of those that you'd like to discuss further? Motion, please.
Make a motion to approve assembly. Second.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Item four, ladies and gentlemen, is an opportunity to those in the audience to speak to this council about any subject of which they have concerns. This will be the only time we'll be calling on you or people who may show up to give discussion about any item that's on the agenda of the city council tonight. So if you're here and you wish to speak about an item on the council tonight, please stand, say your name, and take the podium.
Micah Cash. I am with, I'm actually president of the Perry Kids Inc. for the Booster Club for Little League Baseball. I think we need these new baseball fields. The ones we have now, they're really lacking in a lot of areas as far as parking, handicap accessibility, safety. The twelve under, which is Mark Chambers, has been roping into twice in the last month. The bathrooms out there, which were usable in the first place, have been destroyed completely now. I don't know what needs to happen out there, but, you know, something does. I think it's a good opportunity for Perry. I know U Trip baseball tournaments is a very, very big deal. People travel all over the state to come to these tournaments. It would bring in revenue. There's restaurants out there, hotels. I mean, they're not going to make a day trip for a tournament, you know. Some people drive 10, 15 hours sometimes to these tournaments and, well, I guess not, they'll be too far. Yeah, okay. So that would be, you know, revenue for the town. And it's not just going to be limited to out there. They're going to want to come in and see Perry. Perry's a nice little town. There's nice shops on the square. You know, they have a couple hours, they're going to go into the town and to kill, you know, and wander around and see what's there. I know my oldest boy plays AAU basketball, which is totally different from baseball, but we were in a tournament in Kansas this weekend and we had four hours to spare. So we were in Augusta, Kansas. We went downtown on Main Street. They had a little hot rod show. We killed a couple hours down there, spent a little bit of money, and went back to our tournament. Same thing with baseball, you know. You've got a few hours to spare. You don't want to be sitting out in that hot air, you know, hot sun for that many hours. So you want to go to a nice, cool business and spend your money. But I just, you know, if they decide not to build the fields, which I hope they do, because I think it would be a very good opportunity for Perry and for all the kids. It would help benefit them and it'd give them a nicer field, you know, and they could be prouder where they play and where they show off to visiting teams, you know. And it, but if they decide not to build that, then we really need to do something about the kind of fields as far as parking and safety and updating equipment, you know, the fencing and all that. So I'm for it, but anyways, that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
Yes.
Good evening. My name's Dylan Ripley, and I am the owner of Our Group Incorporated. We were one of your two lowest bidders on the sports complex on Thursday morning. And I'm also the representative for the Oklahoma Territory for Qualite Sports Lighting. And I will touch on that just in a few moments when I get a little further into what I want to present to you guys. On Thursday morning, the original bids were open red loud, as they are on public bid opening. And it appeared that Our Group Incorporated, our company, was low bidder by $307. Very good bidding. I believe that the city had some very good bids and very good pricing. So I want you to have confidence in the pricing that you do have and the contractor that you do go with is going to do a fantastic job for you. So I was excited when I left that day about getting to work with City Perry and doing this job for you guys. There was a formal bid tabulation that was released, as there is always, by the architect of Plain Design Group today around noon. And there were some corrections that took place to the two lowest bidders. Myself, Our Group Incorporated, and DC Bass &amp; Sons Construction are those two contractors that I'm referencing here. The difference that came out today is $925. So again, not, there was not any major calculations that were revised. Still a very good number, but very tight, very tight. And it's something that the council needs to consider very closely when you do make your decision, whether it's denied or further consideration, and then you make your decision down the road. At this point, I see you probably have three options. The first option is you consider the bids and the bid packages that Plain Design Group, as the canvas, is going to present to you guys. If you notice, there's an alternate eight bid, and it was selected as an alternate, a bid as an alternate. Clever, smart, I think appropriate. It is in lieu of Musco Lighting, which is a very good sports lighting manufacturer. They are the largest sports lighting manufacturer in the world. I represent Qualite Sports Lighting, as I said. We are the second-largest sports lighting manufacturer in the world. Again, both companies are going to do a great job for you, going to put a good product on the field. The difference is I am the direct distributor, the installer for Qualite in Oklahoma. And so based on the base bid, if you replace alternate eight with line 18 in the base bid, I save you $26,000 right off the top. Now, there has to be substance to your decision to take, to not take the most responsible lowest bidder. This is your substance. There are parts of the project, I know this is recorded, there are parts of the project that can be value engineered to deepen the savings to the city. What do those savings do to you as your decision? As you heard this miss talk, this thing is needed. The alternates, more of the alternates can be taken. Your money can be used. It can go further, and your value as a whole increases based on the city's decision to the people of City of Perry. And so I appreciate the opportunity to stand in front of you and present me, myself, and Qualite Sports Lighting. And please consider these items that I have presented to you tonight as you make your decision soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dylan.
John McCarty. I would like to speak about the sports complex. I think I coached in this town, in this city, for several years. My son, since he was four. My daughters hit eight under softball, 10 under softball. My youngest daughter, just, we had 10 and under softball this year. The thing that I think that, and I don't want to say that we're wrong, but I don't think that we think about the kids enough, because what they deserve is not what we have now. What we deserve, what these kids deserve, is everything that we're going to provide for them. I don't think that you guys realize how much revenue is spent outside of Perry every weekend during baseball and softball season. If you do, I know that I know a few of you guys, and you've taken your kids to these baseball tournaments and these softball tournaments, and you know the amount of money that you've spent getting into these complexes day after day, and the hotel rooms, and the money that you spend with food and snacks, because obviously you don't just take one child with you. I just think that keeping this money in Perry, keeping this revenue in Perry, having these tournaments and doing them the right way, it's a great opportunity. These kids deserve this, all of these kids. My kids are pretty much done. I won't have anything to do with kids out there, but I will gladly help out anything that is needed. I mean, umping games, whatever, write my name down, I don't care. I think it's a great opportunity. I think it's a great deal. It's a great idea. It's something that this town has needed for several years. And if we don't pass it, okay, fine, but let's fix up what they've got. Let's do it the right way, because what we have right now is unacceptable. And that's just, again, my opinion, but thank you, guys.
I'm also here for the sports complex. I believe that it will be an incredible, incredible asset to our community, like you said, just bringing in the revenue. It is amazing how much money is spent. I mean, we have four children, two girls and two boys, and we're in the height of all of that and going to tournaments and going to games nightly and trying to take care of that. And having something like that here, that we can bring other teens and families here to our community, to see our community, yes, they can pass by us on the roadway and see that there's a town there, but then if we can bring even more, more people that come up and down I-35 that see, hey, that is, what is that community? That's an awesome community. That's a growing community. That's a community that cares about their families. That's a community that wants to see growth and development. Maybe I want to be a part of that community. Maybe there's businesses that want to come because they see this community of Perry wanting to grow, wanting to develop, wanting to see their families grow and develop and do things here together. I've heard of people that aren't wanting it, and I just don't understand. As a mother, as a citizen of this town, there's absolutely no reason to me why we would say no to this. There's absolutely no reason why we would say no to this. And I know that there's a lot of people that seem to be loud about it, that don't want it, and I just can't understand why. The fields, the 12-under fields are awful. They're horrible. I drive by them on a regular basis out there going to softball fields. And I keep thinking in my mind, when my kid gets to 12-under, I'm ashamed, absolutely ashamed. And I'm sure that the parents that are at that level right now with their boys in 12-under are ashamed. They've tried to have tournaments there, and they've done it, but there's a point there where they're stopping to even try to do that because they're ashamed to bring in other people and have tournaments. And like Micah was saying, I mean, every time I think, I'm like, not only will it bring revenue for out at I-35, people are going to bring revenue into our downtown city. I think that our downtown is awesome. I love our little square and the businesses that are on the square. A little bit of marketing out there would bring people in on their two to three hours that they have between games, that bring people into our downtown area to check things out at Thorns, at Comeback, at Chemnons, at all those different places that are downtown and coming through, because we're not large, it's not far apart, it's not a far drive. You come into town and you check out this community that your kid's playing baseball in. To me, it's a no-brainer. It's a win-win situation from the youngest to the oldest. It brings revenue that our community desperately needs. And this money was earmarked for economic development. So unless these baseball fields get built out there, I don't know what you're going to do with that money for economic development. But to me, I mean, we're already having businesses that want to come in because of the baseball fields. And guess what? They won't if it doesn't. So I hope that you guys will continue to go on the pathway that you've already voted and decided as a group to do, and continue to move forward with that, and to stop listening to the naysayers, even though they seem to be very loud, because I will tell you that there's a lot of people who want it, but they're not vote blockers. They're not vote blockers, and they don't want to stand up and yell from the fan stands. So they're not loud, so you don't hear them as much. And it's because they don't want to cause controversy. And it's sad to me that there are so many people out there who do want to cause controversy to see something that's already been made a decision for that doesn't want it. So I hope you will continue down the pathway and see this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Are there others who wish to speak? Seeing none. Thank you for your comments and your time. We know for some of you it's difficult to get here at this time of day with your things. Item number five, proclamations commendation reports inquiry by the governing body. Counsel, do you have anything you need to bring?
I have a question.
Yes.
Do we start the streets with them?
Yes, we do.
We have a new one, actually. A precondition new one.
Okay. I was just running around like on the weekends and stuff, and there's a lot of nails and stuff in the streets, I noticed. And maybe we need to get our streets swept or out. I don't know how long can that be done.
Betty, if you notice those, if you'll give us a location, we'll make sure it's on our common route. And if it's not appropriate for the street sweeper, we'll get, we can get some push brooms or something out there.
Okay.
Paul Glenn, she'll pick you up. She sees a nail, she stops and gets it, but she don't want it her type.
You're going to have a long night.
Just call.
Right here.
Anyone else need to speak for the council at the top? Thank you. Item six, city manager's report. Ms. Rep.
Thank you. Just briefly tonight, with school starting next week, the city pool will close Saturday, August 9th, which is this coming Saturday. They'll be closing for the summer. There's a few private pool rentals scheduled for the following week, but once those are done, we'll drain the pool and finish up for the summer. I think we've had good turnout. It seems like every time I drive by there, the pool is full of kids, so it's a good value and the community really supports it and utilizes it. I think there was an inquiry, maybe, I don't know if it was the last meeting or the meeting before, but where we are on the downtown square project. And that's, petition lawsuit was filed today at the courthouse. So that process has started as far as the suit being filed. And the parties will be notified of the suit. They'll be served with the suit, and then we'll go from there. We are painfully aware that the centennial clock by the Carnegie Library is not working. They had been scheduled to come and repair the clock. It rained that day, so for some reason, the technician didn't want to come and work on the clock. But we will reschedule the repair and try to get him back as soon as we can. But like I say, we are aware.
Could have a reenactment of Back to the Future or something.
Yeah. And I don't know why Pam, she just doesn't want to go out there every day and reset that clock. I don't know why, but anyway. The interviews are scheduled this week for the assistant fire chief position, and so I just, I know that's been a question that I've received, so I thought I'd mention that, that we'll schedule those, they are scheduled for this week, and then we'll go from there. And finally, the ribbon cutting, not finally, the ribbon cutting for the Troop K Highway Control Headquarters is tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock. It's out on West 77, just east of the ODOT Division Headquarters. And the city of Perry is extremely happy to have, to be the permanent location for Troop K, and congratulations to them on a really nice facility for them. And finally, in Saturday's Oklahoma, Sunday's Oklahman, there was the Outdoor article. Ed Gotti is the reporter that writes those, and it did feature the CCC Lake and the trout fishing program that will be started at the lake this winter, starting November. The season runs from November until March. And so he wrote a great article. Tyson provided a beautiful picture that he used of CCC Lake. So we're really proud to be featured in the Oklahman and are really looking forward to that, so.
Me, too.
And I invited Ed to come when we opened up the season in November, and he said, you know, I might just do that. So anyway, that's my comments for this evening.
Think about a council session, I think.
Good. Good. Item seven, our chief financial officer's comments.
I just want to take a short second and address maybe a couple of issues, or one issue that has arisen. I know that you guys have all received letters from one of the financial institutions here in town, and I'll make just a couple of brief comments on this. Our goal in all things we do is to maximize the return of the city of Perry's dollars. When our citizens spend their tax dollars and put money in our local economy, and we hold that money, my responsibility for you all has always been to maximize the return that we can get on that. Our goal in going out for financial proposals was to see what options were available for us, and by looking at those options, make sure that we are doing the citizens of Perry the best job we can do. In that process, we tried to be fair, we tried to be equal, we let both local institutions put a bid in on what not only the cost to us would be for checking accounts and service fees and those kind of things, but also what the interest rate returns would be from those accounts. We pulled those in, we tabulated them, and as Meredith reported last time, those numbers came out. And when we look at it, there is somewhere between a six and a $12,000 net benefit to the city of Perry if we change where the funds are being held currently. That was the proposition you all voted on. That was what we moved forward with. We were starting that process. Now, all of these things are done for the benefit of our citizens. We are doing this to maximize the returns on any cash that we have held here. Under our current investment policy, you all have requested that those funds stay within local financial institutions of the city of Perry unless we see that those rates are not comparable to what we could get in the same investment pool in a broader region. We always take a step and look back at that. We look at the ticker sheets, we have a couple of relationships with some outside banks from our other municipalities. We look just to make sure that the interest rates we are earning are in line. And at all times, we have maximized, to the extent possible, the return that we receive on our investments. I hope you all are comfortable with that. It has never been an issue in the past. We will continue to do that, always looking for what is the best for the citizens of Perry. I'll be happy to answer any direct questions you guys had related to the letters that you received, but I did want to make sure that those comments were out there, and you guys know that that is our number one concern.
I think the biggest thing there was, you know, and the response I got from that was making it clear that, you know, from the letter I read on that, depending on how you read that, I wasn't here at the last council meeting, but I think some just want to make it clear that wherever the numbers come out, they come out. But it wasn't that one was charging $12,000 more in fees or $6,000 more in fees. And I think that's how that was interpreted. And I think that's what needs to be made clear, because we don't ever want to make it look like we're throwing any institution under the bus. It doesn't matter what side it is. It really doesn't matter. Just my two cents from what I heard from the.
And yes, let me make sure that that is completely clear. The fees that were being charged, there were only, in the two proposals, one proposal had no fees for anything, including the purchase of checks, stock, including research fees, including any of the items that we currently pay for. The other proposal had pretty much the standard fees that we have been under for the last eight and a half, maybe nine years, and those charges that have been continually coming through to us. Again, the total dollar amount of those are negligible. The difference comes, and look, I will say again, the dollar difference there on the fees is a negligible number. Approximately $500 in checks that we purchase a year. Last year, about $228 worth of fees that we paid during the year for banking services. So not a significant number. The difference comes in the 15 basis points on average that we see as a difference between interest rates that is offered from institution A and is offered from institution B. All we're trying to do.
Not on CDs, but on?
On CDs and on our money market and our high dollar, our higher-yield money market exchange account that we use, because we keep a sweep account inside our portfolio. We have the option to keep minimum balances in checking accounts, which is $25,000, you know. So we keep it $25,000, and we have a sweep account then, those high-yield money market accounts. The rates at which those high-yield money market accounts has always carried a difference in that, in that interest rate. 15 basis points is what we were looking at. Again, just trying to maximize the dollars. One of the things in our overall goal that we're trying to look at is a way to ladder our ability to move some of that money over the next few months. And one of the rates and options that we were quoted in one of the proposals would give us that, we could ladder that on a six-month CD rate without having to really rebid those CDs as long as we were happy with what that money was. Now, if that rate versus what we really want to see at the market isn't where we want it to be, we always have the option to go purchase CDs with that. But hopefully, as interest rates.
And you bid those CDs.
And we bid those CDs. Every time we go out for a CD, we bid those CDs side by side.
Like we always have.
Like we always have. And we will. And we always, and we will continue to do that. But we, we will continue to make then a treasury decision internally with the city as interest rates tick up, making sure that we maximize. There might be a point where, yes, it's better for us to go out and grab the 12 month CD than it is to carry, you know, a six month. But that's going to come at a time in the future whenever we see interest rates becoming flat, you know. As long as we see a potential increase in those interest rates, and guys, I'm no economist, I'm no forecaster. I ask the questions to financial institutions myself. I ask it not only here in town, but I ask it to our other municipal clients. And as they go out for bids on CDs, I'm saying, all right, you guys tell me, six month, 12 month, what are we seeing, you know, what, some internal predictions that they have. Because I'm trying to bring a vast, broad range of experience here. It's not guaranteed that it's going to happen in Perry, but hopefully, it will be the best of what is there. And so that, that's where we're coming from. We will always rebid the CDs every time they come up. Because if we can get a quarter point higher, we're going to take that extra quarter point and we will move those dollars back and forth wherever they need to be to maximize our return.
Right.
Yes, Ms. Clarion.
May I address that for just a moment? I want to take responsibility for part of that because I think it was all in terminology. And probably where I don't understand finances at all, I think it was the way I heard it and I presented it the way I thought I heard it. And I still think it was all in terminology. So I want to accept the responsibility that is mine in that, and I apologize for it.
Thank you, Gloria.
We don't mind blaming you, Gloria.
Absolutely not. That is not.
Very gracious.
If it was not communicated well enough that everybody understood that, I will take responsibility from that end because it was not on, on the paper side by any means.
I kind of got a call on that, too. So again, one of the questions that was asked of me was, did we as a council see the bids? Which I don't think they were included, were they? Because I couldn't, I went back to my paper content, I don't know. And maybe if we include that stuff next time, it'd be better. I'm just saying it's more open.
Yeah, we can, we can easily do that. That's all I had. I just wanted to make sure we were, we were clear and council was good on moving forward. And Gloria, thank you, but absolutely not. We, we will take that responsibility.
Thank you. Item eight. This is more of a public hearing session, you might say. We are here to receive public comments on ODOT's rail corridor program. And in that regard, as you can see in the notations here, the agenda, there are a number of crossings east of I-35. The ODOT rail corridor program permits a participating municipality to have three crossings improved by the state at 90% and a railroad at 10% expense to change, in exchange for closing one of their crossings. So you get three for one. That's pretty awesome. The city, recently, the city approved making improvements to Elm Street Crossing. And the city and state officials discussed the conditions of other crossings. The Elm Street Crossing is currently on hold while we, the city, consider whether it wants to participate in the rail corridor program. Last week, a notice was published in the Perry Daily Journal and played on the Perry Information Network requesting public comment on the rail corridor program. Current crossings there as you see listed, the city should provide public input and the city council should discuss participation. The purpose of the item is to determine which initial crossing should be improved and which should be closed. The only limitation of the city's discretion is that Elm Street Crossing should be listed as either closed or improved. Y'all remember the meeting we discussed that crossing? They had a project planned for over $500,000 to improve Elm Street Crossing. It is really a minor crossing for the city. It's not on a thoroughfare, it's not on a corridor street, it's on a side street or a common, or not even really a neighborhood street in that area. It has, its expense comes from the number of tracks you have to cross and how far those tracks are separated from each other that require additional signage, lighting, and barricades for crossing. So that what, that is what makes that small street crossing so expensive is all the rails, side rails, spurs that come along. So we decided to hold off and discuss with you the possibility of closing Elm Street and getting three other streets improved. That's what this item is all about, discussion. So I'm opening it up to council to input.
I do think Elm Street gets used a lot more than we seem to think because whenever there's a train on one track, people go around on Elm Street. I think that's the right area that I'm thinking about.
We were having to put some, to pay some on that crossing. How much was that?
I'm thinking it was like.
It was minor.
I thought 43,000.
Forty, 45,000 was the number that I'm thinking. So, and under the rail corridor program, the city doesn't, isn't required to put up any of the money. It's totally funded by the feds and the railroad.
On that Elm Street Crossing that, that we put up that money, how many, how many tracks is there? I don't use Elm Street.
Well, you've got two main line tracks that are going north, south that are parallel there. And then the third track, which runs and goes on a big curve right out here by the middle, that track. And then you have two spur tracks. And if we, if they're using those spurs at all, that causes another closure. As Betty pointed out, though, at times, they have Cedar blocked and not Elm or 64 or Fur. And then there are times when Fur and Elm are blocked and Cedar is open. There's been times I ran up the side road to try and make Elm Street Crossing myself. But I had to drive fast.
Well, and if one of them's blocked, if we had an emergency vehicle that had to get through there, that may be the only way they could get through.
Here's the problem, here's the problem with, with all of our rail right now, is that we have anywhere an average, is averages is higher than probably what I'm quoting. It's close to 80 trains a day in a 24 hour period. There are times around 8 o'clock time and 5 o'clock time in the afternoon where if you're going somewhere, you better be a half hour ahead of what you think you want to be there, or you'll wait on two to three trains going different directions on different This will give us repairs for probably any three locations we want that are in what we consider desperate need to be repaired, but by the railroad, they're not hazardous. And there's got to be a board standing almost straight up where it'd be hazardous anymore or a piece of rail. That's a consideration here, saving the money we'd spend on Elm Street, which is a minor crossing in most of our minds, and applying our effort toward other three crossings.
Trying to, oh, go ahead.
This is not the solution to the train traffic. That is something that, that is something I've been trying to.
I just like smoother crossings.
That is another topic I'm trying to take on with.
And say, with lights and cantilevers and like that.
15th Street, they, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
15th Street, they say, is, is just rough. That'd give you wet black.
Leamont is, Leamont is the roughest, I would say, the one that goes by the nursing home.
Yeah, Leamont is a pretty new crossing, yes. I want to throw that after.
15th Street.
It's a pretty new.
Been done the last two years.
They've redone it.
15th Street, you have spikes that come up.
Yeah. 15th is the old wood with the spikes still. And 11th is not. It's the new style.
It's just that it's robed.
They raised it.
They raised it up.
They raised it up.
So you've got, yeah, you've got this.
If you get going fast enough.
It's a curve.
You can hit the center and you jump the other side of trucks.
Like Doakes and Hans.
And you can miss them over there and not face.
About 40, that's possible.
I, I almost look like this as in blackmail, you know?
I might somebody else.
Because it's like, if you, if you, if you close a crossing, we'll fix some of yours. But there's no mention of if you don't close a crossing, that we'll come fix your tracks.
Railroad mafia.
Yeah, exactly. And I'm not even, I'm not even playing that game. I'm just telling you.
Here's the deal. I went through the same thing with the city of Gaiman in Goodwill when I was working out west. And we've got a lot of crossings improved, but there are, there are crossings that are unnecessary and dangerous that you need to take care of. We don't have any that I think are unnecessary, but we do have some that are dangerous, not now, the dangerous condition to us. Elm Street, if you want to sacrifice Elm Street.
I think if you ask the railroad, I hate to interrupt you, but, but if you ask the railroad, you'd get a different answer. And because I think they would say Locust East is the worst one because you get all those trucks come out of that sale barn and those truck drivers don't know where, don't know to turn around and go back out the way they came in. And they go north and they get hung up. How many times over the years has a truck been hung up on that rail and tore it up? And then the insurance company had to pay the railroad to fix it and all that. They would probably say that Locust East is the worst.
Yeah, we're, we're not going.
Trash trucks also.
Trash trucks. And, and so does Sand.
Yes.
So here's the deal.
We have another crossing that's not listed here, and I'm going to call it the First Street Crossing, as it would be north of these two Locust Crossings and it leads to our transfer station.
Oh, yeah, that, that crossing.
And that's not even on here. And is that in the city limits or is it not?
Yes.
Yeah, I think.
Well, we paved that road, so I don't know if it's in the city limits, but we paved that road. So maybe we paved the county road.
Actually.
But I would like to see that listed on here also in ODOT's recommendation of it, whether they.
Well, they just redid it. It's branded, they redid it.
It's been redone.
Last week.
Did we participate in that?
Nope.
So it's not in the city limits?
I.
We don't.
All right, I'll shut up.
We know, we know you're absolutely toward.
I love talking about the railroads.
Railroad mafia. Here's, here's the point, you got to decide.
Well, Locust East certainly, you know, I mean, if you're going to look at Elm, Locust East is, you know, kind of right in there with it. I know.
Well, sometimes that's the only way around.
Locust East?
Yes. Okay, the only way. When the train decides to cross or stop on all the rest of the tracks, we go north to the fairgrounds. And usually, that's the last one that you can get through on to get food down, period. And sometimes they sit there. Excuse me. I'm not talking.
You're, you're fine. No. We've got, this is, this is a public meeting.
Okay.
And so probably, just talk to your comments if you'd just come to the podium, if you would please do that.
I don't think I was asked to go to the podium. I can go to the podium.
The public hearings are usually, we usually ask people.
I'm, I'm sorry, I messed up.
And identify yourself so that.
Happens every time I come.
I mess up?
No. Whatever I do the wrong thing. I just know I live on the wrong side of the tracks. And I've lived there for 30 some years. And I am telling you, the only way lots of times when the train decides to stop there for 30 minutes or an hour and a half or whatever, okay, the time is, that's the only way we have of getting around. Sometimes we can get through on I and Ho and sometimes we have to go clear on up to the, whatever that is, by the sale barn. So whatever you're calling it.
Thank you.
It's the only way to get to town. And sometimes, I think the EMTs would probably testify that they can't get around either and they have to go that way.
So which, which crossing would you be in favor of closing?
Well, if it, I'm not in favor of Elm either because I use that, too. But it would be the one that I would probably choose over all of the rest of them because I can go on up to Fur usually, or from Fur, I can go down to Cedar. So assuming that the train is not on, on the way up. But I'm telling you, there are times that we do have to go all the way when they're sitting there for so long. Thank you.
And that's kind of what worries me is the fact that we've got a train sitting there and if we have to have an ambulance to the east of town or if it has to come back into town, you know, there might be sitting there for 15, 20 minutes.
Well, I, y'all know where I live and, you know, I have a window on Cedar Street all the way to the track in my third floor, third floor apartment. And I have seen the brush truck, lights going, had to turn right and go around the train and head down south to get across the tracks south of town. And that means going out onto 25th Street and going south there, get across the tracks, get over to the east side. Now, what does that do to their response time, Chief? It goes from four minutes that we want to a half hour of reluctance.
So in our negotiations, oh, I'm sorry.
We probably have more.
I'm just waiting my turn.
You go right on ahead.
Go ahead.
I know what luck is.
Just a pain.
He lives on the wrong side of the tracks.
I do.
Yeah, we noticed that.
Advisor to the planning commission. And I, I went out today and drove over all of these crossings to see what the current condition is. And I have some questions and some suggestions maybe worth considering. But I think maybe there's a couple of folks here that could answer this first one. Are there design specifications for a crossing? Like smoothness, approach angle?
A minute, go ahead.
Don't look me in the eye.
I'm retired from the Department of Transportation.
Maybe 11th Street.
I did 11th Street. So is there anyone here that is aware of design standards for that sort of design? And let me give an example of one thing I'm considering, thinking of. On 15th Street, even if they replaced the wood with the current, whatever that material is, concrete or whatever it is.
It's a precast concrete pad.
So even if that was replaced, we would still have an approach angle, I don't know if that's the correct term or not, but it appears that the city of Perry would also need to share in that crossing to bring the elevation up before you get there, then cross smoothly and then proceed back on a rise. As it is, you have street coming up, street coming down and railroad flat in the middle. And no matter how smooth the middle is, it's going to bump your head on top of the car when you go across. My, my point in saying that is that, is there a way that the city and railroad, whomever, could participate in an approach that blends everything together better than maybe what has been done in the past? And that seemed to be a common thing on each of these crossings that I went across today. Some of them have had that middle section replaced with the precast concrete, but it doesn't align with the approaches. They're either high or low or at a bad angle. And the railroad seems to have filled in with some asphalt to blend into our paving. But maybe we need to get together and hold hands on this thing and bring it all together like 7th Street. ODOT just paved that, railroad rebuilt it. It's wonderful. You can breeze across that and carrying on the conversation, you may not even know that you just went across railroad tracks. It's the best it's ever been in my lifetime.
It is very.
So that, that's one point. If there are some design standards, could, could they follow it? It appears that if there are some, they haven't been followed. Another thing, what, what kind of funds are available for this program that's being discussed? Is there a limit or what, what happens there?
Well, it, it's 100% paid by somebody else.
I like the sound of that.
And we trade one and we get three.
Okay.
And so what we want to make sure is that we're not, we're not picking one that is slated to be repaired, that we get, you know, the, the most bang for our buck out of, out of the three that we get. And we trade off the one that we're willing to walk away from.
Then I would suggest to make this trade off really worthwhile, let's, let's make sure that we're getting something that satisfies, I think, everything that's been discussed here tonight. The amount of train traffic and the, the safety aspect, all of those things could be handled if you didn't have an on grade crossing on Highway 64, if I'm saying that right, 1st Street. If there was an overpass there, people don't like that word.
Don't know, some of us like it.
We like it, but we're.
We love it.
Don't, don't. Don't, no, don't say that. You'll, you'll jinx it. I was, I went to Tulsa, I went almost to Tulsa yesterday, and on the way back, I drove over the most beautiful overpass I've seen in a long time. It's eight miles east of Pawnee. I don't know how I got there, somebody had to pay for it. There's the old one next to it and this brand new, wonderful, it's almost a mile long of dirt work and approach and new paving, new concrete and everything. That gum, somebody got that one, why can't we get one?
Was it on the way to the casino?
I have no idea.
It's between Cleveland and Pawnee.
Yes.
But it's on sixty-four.
Yeah.
It's on sixty-four.
I am addressing the crossing issue for an overpass, excuse me, with, right now. As a matter of fact, I'm preparing a document or a letter to, to the ODOT in, in that conversation. It would have to be just between ODOT and railroad and possibly us, I'm sure it'd be us too, for construction of such a thing. But everybody says it's too expensive. Well, it's never going to get any cheaper.
Right.
And I've been contacted by some people that said, I said, I'll give you my place, you know? And so there's some options on alignment, there's options on location. Karen pointed out a good, a good route herself to me one day and I walked it out and I walked out some other routes south of town and I walked out to Fur Street and talked to some people on it. So it's, it's an issue that I don't think is going to be resolved in the next five years, but I'm, I'm making a formal request to ODOT to put it on their eight-year construction group.
Okay.
And if that happens, great. If it doesn't, then I'm going to keep after them. I'm, I'm not going to give up. We've got to have a way that our officers and our firefighters can get across the tracks. And they know which way to go without having to stop and think, well, which, which street do I go to? And that's, that's why I'm doing it. It has nothing to do with me waiting on a train because I'm retired, I got time waiting on a train. And, and, but I do not want to see another brush truck have to go south of town because everything north of it has got a train on it parked and one coming through at about five miles an hour. That made me sad, I'm mad. I called my, my very, very good friend of mine that's in rail business and talked to him and, you know, pointed out there's, there's six miles of track north of town, there's five miles of track south of town. Why can't they stop at either one of those locations?
Well.
Whatever passes, passes.
But that's the reason I asked, what is the financial limitation on this thing that's being discussed? I don't think it's a matter of money, I think it's a matter of priority. There's a lot of money being spent on highways, bridges and such. Look at Oklahoma City, I love it, it's beautiful, but just give me one of those overpasses here.
Just one.
Just one, it's all one.
The last one I was talking about is Ponca City and it was quite a project. And it's, it's a horrendous project. You just can't believe that dealing with railroad, how fun that is. It's like going to Russia and trying to take over.
Well, you made, you made a comment a while ago about can the railroad, we all hold hands and do this together. I don't think the railroad holds hands with anybody.
No, they were here first. That's where it has to be.
Yeah.
I'll tell you that. Yeah.
They were here first, yeah.
Can we, but this program was the first time ODOT and the railroad got together and did anything.
That's right.
With this program.
Right here.
And then when you eliminate a crossing, and I was getting off my cell phone, when you eliminate a crossing.
You're supposed to be up here.
Shut. You've, you've created and made the number one safety improvement that you can make at a railroad crossing. You eliminated it. There'll be no more vehicle accidents, no more fatalities, no more injuries at that location.
Well, let me ask a question then. What, what makes up the crossing? Because I could show you a place that I'd be very willing to give up where traffic crosses the tracks in question. Gravel has been laid so that it is smooth with the top of the tracks so vehicles can go across it. And when the trains are blocking down here, blocking the west tracks, I've seen vehicles go between the tracks down to the Silverthorne Motel.
Yeah.
And cross. Is that a crossing?
No.
Well, you get a ticket if you do it.
Yeah.
You'll get a ticket if you do it.
But it sure looks like a crossing, let's close that one.
It looked, it looks like a crossing, acts like a crossing, must be a crossing.
Yeah, that's what I think. Let's close it.
It's the length of the street.
Let's close it.
There, that's, I've, I've snuck down that myself a few times.
I guess another thing is what, what is, consists of improvements? We have, we have on Fur and on Cedar both, we have a set of tracks that have no, what do they call them, arms?
Catle levers.
That's an improvement.
That's considered an improvement. Okay? Is it, is it a total dollar amount that we can get or is it three improvements? So they can get, they can get out of here real cheap compared to fixing, fixing other crossings that, that need some serious improvement?
Well, I think this bill will be a response back to ODOT. They, they, they are the kind of manager of this program. We respond back to ODOT and they're railroad people. And they want to do as Jim has discussed, as David has discussed, to rebuild, not just improvement, to rebuild those bad crossings and get them smoother. They don't do a, when the railroad comes through, they take care of their, their area. They don't touch ours and they don't want us touching theirs. That's why this program, Jim said, is one of the first in the nation and a very important program now nationally. And, and we got to decide if we want to participate. That's it. With this item, we decide if we want to participate.
Or if there's questions, if you're not ready to make that decision, if we have questions to send back to ODOT for clarification.
Do they have the right to deny our crossing? Do we want to close? Say we come out and say, we want to close Eleventh Street, not that we would, can they say, oh, that's a bad idea? Or is that up to us?
No, it's up to the city.
No, they, they're looking for the one to close and the three to improve.
Eleventh Street, they'd probably just jump up and down on that. Now, we're talking to the railroad.
I, I've got one more question. Which one do we close? If we close Eleventh this time, which one do we close next time?
Well, if we, we vote if we want to participate.
Or we don't worry about that, that's future council.
No, it, it's a decision.
So if we rank these right now tonight, Eleventh's number one, we've already talked about that, which one's number two?
We're improving. I think.
I mean, I'm sorry, Elm Street, we're closing, I'm sorry. I said that wrong, I said Eleventh, I meant closed. Elm Street's number one, which one's number two? Which one would we close next?
I, I don't.
We don't know. Well, okay, I say, I make a motion, we table this until we get an answer. Can I say something?
Further discussion.
We're in a public hearing, I can't make a move.
Yeah, that'd be the next.
You'll lose the funding.
No, we, we, we just decide if we want to participate or not. And my experience with these programs, it's a local government engineer at ODOT and working with rail, is that it's not just fix the spot between the tracks. It's to improve the whole interchange for safety reasons. Now, the reason they ask for you to close one is just as Jim said, once that's closed, there'll never be another access. That's the safest thing you can do at a rail crossing.
And are we doing that here tonight? Are we doing that tonight?
No, we're deciding if we want to participate in this program with discussion.
Well, I think we have to do that. Right?
Well, they're asking for a letter from the City of Perry. If, if we're interested in participating, they have asked for a letter from the City of Perry.
When we, if we approve of that, we're closing a crossing. So we need to decide tonight.
But they want to know from us what crossing that is.
And our recommendation tonight is Elm Street.
I, I didn't say it was Elm Street.
That was mine.
I didn't say it was Elm Street.
Okay, if we choose to participate in this program and let's say we choose to close Elm Street, which I think Ben made a good point, that is an alternative route when you're backed up, can we ask them for some sort of a no-block guarantee if you're going to stop the train as we're negotiating with them, that this has got to be?
You don't get a guarantee from railroad, neither. Our hammer, our hammering is their relationship with ODOT. And it's tentative based on hourly hours.
But isn't that something?
So there's no room for negotiation in this? Got to drive.
Well, I think we can talk to them, like Eleventh Street is arms and lights, it's very, you know, it's very rough. People think it's very rough. I mean, they ought to throw that one, you know.
And as an extra.
As an extra, in my opinion. So three and a half is what you're saying? Because they're not going to have to do lights, they're not going, no, they probably won't do it. But I did, I did want to point out that currently Elm Street is slated for improvements. We approved that two or three months ago, just so that we know that. And, and we put up forty-five thousand?
We have not put any money yet.
Right. But, but we agreed to.
We agreed to.
I mean, yeah, I mean, we agreed to. I, I mean, because we signed the agreement and said this one. And that's what brought about this conversation. That's what brought about this conversation. Is there a way that we can do something, close one and get three fixed?
Anytime I think we're dealing with somebody, I don't think it's, you know, if we open the door to some sort of communication, which we don't get very much from our railroad, why is it that we cannot maybe pursue and ask, hey, we're willing to close this down, we have an issue in our town, when it comes to having eighty railroads come through our town, that we can ask for something? And ask for us to be able to have a no-block.
You can ask.
Yeah, that comes with having.
That's fine, but if we don't ask, we don't know.
Well, I can assure you I'd ask.
Well, I, that's all I'm asking.
But deal is, we got to, we got to decide if we want to participate. And that's the next item on our agenda.
Well, I don't usually participate.
Oh, they're my fault.
Because I feel like I'm here representing the paper. But I have a real issue when it comes to railroad tracks. We've had more than one fatality in Perry on railroad tracks that still stand out close to my heart. I was at Lucine early one morning and started up their path. And I looked and I did not see a train coming, but something told me to stop. And I stopped and looked up into the face of, of a, a train. And they had nothing. And twice within the past couple of years, I've seen people racing down there to go across Elm and just try to beat the train. And that's why one girl was killed, trying to beat the train across the track. Elm Street is a dangerous place and I will not even go down there and attempt to cross it if I have to sit forty-five minutes because of the experience I had in Lucine. I am not going to try to beat a train. And when you see one coming, another maybe coming the other direction and you're too intent on trying to get across that track that has no lights, no arms, no warning, nothing, and it's just in the middle of nowhere.
Thank you.
There was a vehicle, I believe, within the last year that was hit on the, hit on those set of tracks.
It's very narrow.
I know that it seems like there's a lot of people that don't like the railroad and I get that and I appreciate it and all that, but logically, there are the first two, two questions we have to answer. First is, do we participate or not? Yes or no? And second is, then we can start talking about what closes, what stays open, what gets improved, all that stuff. So if we don't participate, what's your, what's your alternative?
Spend the money.
Yeah, nothing happens, right?
Spend the money.
And we have to spend the money if we want to do something. Right? So I don't know where the question is, whether we participate or not. It doesn't make any sense to me to keep debating that. The second one is, I'm with Karen on not closing the Locust one. A little selfish because I live on that side of the, the tracks.
You can always get through.
I can always get through on that side if I have to. And Elm, if I'm going to Elm Crossing and that's closed, I can go down to Cedar, it's right there. Fur's a little bit more of a jaunt, but it's not that bad. So if we want to participate, which I think is, would be prudent of us to take advantage of this, even if we, it's like dealing with the devil. But I don't see a choice. Then I think the logical thing is to close that Elm Crossing because it is a dangerous one. I've seen lots of wrecks there just recently. And there's ways around it pretty easily, okay? Keeping the Locust ones open allows that extra route around it and then off to the convenience station too.
Are you still a public comment?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Okay, this is a public comment. Get up here. Spending money on Elm Street would be criminal to spend city money when you can get three better crossings repaired for free.
Yeah. Amen.
I, I believe if, if Cedar Street is, if, if Elm Street is open, either Cedar or Fur is open. If you can get around Cedar, one of those other two have to be open also.
They're not, they're not.
Sometimes, sometimes they're all three closed.
I, I agree, but I said, if you can get down Elm, most generally you can get down one of those other two streets.
Yeah, you can go around them.
Exactly. If the train comes to the north and you got Fur blocked, you, if you can get around Elm, you can go on down and get around Cedar.
Now, one thing that if, by closing Elm, you get into is that the people that live right there on the west side of, of, of the tracks, right there at Elm Street and in there around Shady Lady in that area, you know, they're, they would be used to taking that crossing and going straight out if they want to go it out to, to the lake or Stillwater or wherever, where now they would have to kind of take a jog around to downtown to get there. So it'd be a little bit of inconvenience for those, those, those folks, but I think.
I think you're talking one house.
Yeah, there might be one or two, two in there, but, you know, so they're not here tonight, I don't think. So they must not care too much about it. Anyway, that's my, my opinion. Do we need a motion if we want to? I think we got to, that's the next.
I just got to, is there anyone else need to speak in the public hearing for railroad to see? Any other comments?
Yeah, I would make one comment. And, and that has to do with the blockage issue. You know, you know, really what we ought to do is we have complaints at City Hall, complaint forms, and, and we ought to encourage folks that have experienced blockage longer than fifteen minutes to come down and, and file them. And we should send them off to the railroad. And, you know, that's really the way that we justify an overpass, you know, to show that they are consistently blocking it and we've got dates and events and, and if it is as I'm told that it is and everybody just carried their, you know, their stopwatch or whatever or they're known, I'm sure that if it's fifteen minutes, it's known that it has happened. And even law enforcement, you know, that, that does it or the, the fire department. And if we filed those, I think we could create a, you know, enough, enough violations that perhaps we could, we could justify. Because right now, without those complaints, I mean, I don't think they're going to consider it. I mean, you know, it's, we all know it's bad, but, but, but we haven't processed the form. So that's what I would do. And if we need to get those forms and I actually pull the rule out and, you know, we can, we can make a difference there. That's all.
The one, the one comment I had about this whole thing from a, a citizen was, if we do this, negotiate the amount of time the train can be stopped.
Isn't that already set by law though? I didn't mean that.
Yeah, I believe it's fifteen minutes.
But fifteen minutes. Who's going to? Officer Carson? Are you going to enforce that for us?
I have seen them sitting there. I have seen them sitting there watching.
You have a shootout with a paint here, don't you, huh?
We can, I mean, we deal with NSF police all the time and we can definitely talk to them about it.
Uh-oh. I have another comment.
Here we go.
I was talking to a state representative one time about this and he said, something that would carry clout is to show what our alternative would be to duplicate our emergency is to show what our alternative would be to duplicate our emergency services on the other side of the tracks.
East Perry and West Perry.
He suggested that as an alternative to a crossing or an overpass, show what it would, what our alternative is.
Let's get much that. We've got those numbers somewhere. We were talking about that many years ago.
New firehouse, substation.
On these.
I think the fire department, we love a new fire department.
It's $400,000.
Yeah, right.
A year.
That's working, that's working the numbers. Plus, you still have to get back to the hospital.
Yeah, we can build another hospital inside tracks.
We can build a, urgent, urgent care on the inside, too.
We got, we got county health office over there.
If they need an emergency vaccine.
Maybe emergency. Maybe we'll make a compensator that noted. Okay, I'm going to call the public meeting to cease and convene into our regular session here, which is. Item nine. Consider authorizing the city manager send a letter to mark the errors transportation specialists with the Rails Program Division Safety Branch requesting participation in rail corridor program, setting up proposed crossings to be improved and a crossing to be closed.
Do we need to make the motion to accept, to enter the program separate from the one about the crossing and closing?
It could not be all in one.
All in one.
I think, I think it can, don't you think?
We need to make all this one.
I make a motion that we enter and participate in the program. We keep, we, we close Elm Street and we improve Fifteenth, Eleventh, and then what are those again?
I'll second that.
Now, we discussed the level to schedule for improvements already, is it not?
Well, we can, we can, we can do the, pick the crossings later. I mean, it doesn't have to be now, does it?
I think it had to be in that letter.
Yeah.
It has to be in the letter?
That's what they, that's what they asked for.
Well, we need more information on the Eleventh Street before we pick. We have to know what they're going to do with the Eleventh Street.
And with this, we might be able to get that elevation thing fixed where you don't fly, you know, where you can cross it
Without going airborne.
Ten miles or fifteen miles an hour and not lose your mufflers.
I guess to finish my motion, I need one more street. You said Eleventh, right?
Well, but, but what I'm saying is, they're, they're saying that the possibility of Eleventh Street is already scheduled.
Well, Eleventh's already got your arms and your lights. And that's, that's a huge cost. I would think we should pick something that don't have.
First street doesn't have any. Yes, that's right. So Fur and Fifteenth.
And Eleven.
And Eleven, well.
I like Cedar.
I think that Fur, they already have Fur on the drawing board for improvements at no, at no cost. Because I met, Sam and I met out there. It's been several months.
See, what I'm saying is, if we got all these things, we need to know.
Well, I understand.
That's why we're down.
That's why, that's why.
But if we pick it and then they go, oh, no, we're not going to do it, then we're.
Because they, you know, there are issues because the east, the west crossing doesn't have any cantilevers.
Maybe we ought to just prioritize this entire list. I mean, seriously, and then, and then they say, well, that one's already scheduled, we're going to do something with that, so kick that one out. You follow same?
Is there room for that? If we, if we submit our three and then they say, well, we're going to do that one anyway.
Well, my, before the letter goes, I'm going to call and talk to them about.
Maybe we just save three streets to, and leave it to our city manager to pick the three. And then if she gets them wrong, we can yell at her.
We won't fire you over a railroad track.
Throw me on the track.
Fifteen, yeah.
Snidely Whiplash will be coming after you.
Fifteenth is the one we want for sure, right?
That's been a good suggestion that, I know it's inappropriate, but I think he's made a good suggestion that I would like to hear him saying in regards to Cedar Street. Please, is it all right?
Yeah, he's our traffic guy.
I would, I would consider Cedar Street if I was you folks and try and coordinate it with the bridge replacement. And they'll have, you'll get two berths with one stone. You'll give the contractor with the railroad plenty of time to fix it while they're building a new bridge. And they can fix it, have plenty of time to fix it right.
Have plenty of room.
That's a very good point.
Fifteenth, Cedar.
Fifteenth, Cedar. What else?
Locust? No, which one?
I would say it depends on if Eleventh is up for.
Eleventh would be the top priority and Locust East has no arms, no lights.
Are we sure, are we sure Eleventh Street's on the list to get redone?
Well, I would say that, you know, it has the safety features.
Lights and arms.
It has lights and arms already. It's the roughness.
So we need to go fifteen, Cedar, Locust East.
Let's, let's see what we can do as far as, you know, working on the roughness part of it.
The, the project for, to, to take care of the roughness can be taken care of by the city as a street project with permission from the railroad to tie into their approach list.
I think if we.
Because I think it's like two feet on either side of the tracks is their responsibility. Is that right, Jim?
I thought it was fifteen foot measure from center.
Okay.
Each way. Each way or just fifteen total?
No, I.
From center.
I think it's from center.
Okay, I'm just.
And I thought it was fifteen foot total, but don't, I wouldn't swear to that.
Yeah, well, that's another question.
I think if we pick three up here, they're probably going to say, well, we were going to do that one anyway. I mean, I don't think they're going to cheat us like that if they're going to have this program.
I think they cheat us.
Okay, so I guess my motion is that we enter the agreement. We participate in the program. We improve Fifteenth, Cedar, and Locust East. We close Elm. That's my motion.
If they're going to fix.
If they're going to fix eleven. If they're going to fix eleven. If they're not going to fix eleven, then we kick out Locust East and put Eleven.
Everyone understand the motion? Repeat it.
Yeah, can you repeat it?
I, I, I move that we participate in the program. We improve Fifteenth. We improve Cedar and Locust East unless they're not going to do Eleven. If they're not going to do Eleven, then Locust East would be off the improvement list and Eleventh would be on the improvement list. And we close Elm.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Sterling.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Oxley.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade. He said yes.
He said yes.
Warner, yes, Johnson.
I heard him, but he said it.
Thank you.
It, it pained him, but he said it.
He don't want to do nothing. He hates.
I don't blame him.
Under duress. Item ten.
Top of your head, Smith.
I got that.
This is to receive the canvas of bids from Planning Design Group on the Perry Sports Complex. We have our engineer here. Would you take, hold him, please? Thank you, sir. I hear that you're an architect.
Landscape architect.
Wars count. Okay.
I like Kirby stuff.
Yeah. Give your name, please.
Jeffrey Evans with Planning Design Group.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
Thank you. Basically, in your package, I believe you have what we submitted to the city, which is a, what we call a corrected or modified bid form, where we have taken all the bids that were submitted by each contractor, which, as pointed out earlier, there were seven contractors that submitted bids. In that package, you'll see there were a variety of different errors by each contractor. No contractor having zero errors. There were math errors, total calculating errors. Some numbers left off, some left numbers provided as deducts instead of add alternates. So we have went through and corrected each of these with the numbers that were provided by the contractors. And this is the modified and correct bid form. So you can see that there. Based on the base bid, DC Bass is the low contractor. If any or all alternates are selected, to our knowledge, DC Bass is the low contractor. And so we have written a letter of recommendation at the city's request, providing that recommendation that DC Bass and Sons be awarded the contract based on their numbers being the lowest bid and past experience with that contractor having completed projects not only for us, but sports complexes for us. So we have no problem as them being represented as the lowest and best bid.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Any questions, Jeffrey, please?
Yeah, they are the lowest bid, I guess, but not by much.
No, sir. The numbers presented to you earlier were correct by Mr. Ripley. Base bid was nine hundred and some odd dollars. I don't remember the exact. If you take all the bids, it, it jumps up a little bit. If you take out the alternate that, that he referred to, A eight, just leaving that as a separate number because that replaces a number up top. I believe A one through A seven, it increases to about a fifteen thousand dollar difference or sixteen thousand dollar difference. So if you were to put there side by side, DC Bass and our group, base bid items one through seven, it, it becomes about a fifteen thousand dollar difference.
In favor of which?
In, in favor of DC Bass.
Even by taking A eight and moving it up?
If you move A eight, it gets even worse because A eight, DC Bass has in for a hundred and forty-nine thousand and our group has in for a hundred and eighty-three thousand.
Thank you.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
No further questions.
This is just a motion to accept the bids.
No.
Information.
Yeah, now you said you've worked with, with the Bass, DC Bass for in the, in the past?
Yes, sir.
How many parks have they done for you?
For us, we've been involved with one aquatic facility, two aquatic facilities, one sports complex. Within the last couple of years, they've built for us. So in the last five years, three different projects we've been involved with, with them.
And of those, would you say it's a hundred percent satisfaction?
I would say there's not a hundred percent satisfaction with any contractor we've dealt with.
That's what I was hoping to say, okay? So your satisfaction rate with them versus other contractors you've worked with?
Yes, I would say I, I have a, a good relationship and a good, good working basis with them and we were pleased with the work that they provided. As I've told Marion, as I've told Bryce, as I've told anybody that we've dealt with at the city, Jason, or whoever else, it's not always the, the general contractor that's your, that's your issue. You can have the best general contractor in the world and not to say that he isn't the best one. Or DC Bass isn't the best one, or even your third person's the best one. But it all comes down to how they manage their subs and who their subs are. Because you can have the best contractor in the world, but if they don't manage their subs, or they got one poor sub, that one person can ruin the project.
That's a great fact.
And dealing with this on a daily basis, I have three sports complexes under contract right now that we are participating in the construction administration on. One contractor or a subcontractor can damage a job that it delays it and causes headaches for everybody.
Do you have, off the top of your head, I'm, I'm putting you on the spot here, but do you have a percentage of on time and on budget? With the number of projects you have, is it ninety percent? Is it fifty percent?
With the projects that we.
That you have experience with, that's right. I wouldn't ask you to do it.
With, with DC Bass or just our projects in general?
Your project, you and DC Bass and Park.
To my knowledge, all of those came in on time and on budget, other than changes that were requested by the city or unforeseen conditions that had to change those.
So when there was no last minute ECOs, you were on time, on budget a hundred percent?
Typically, yes. With, with all of our projects, we try to be that way. We're using, using money at the end to add to the project in lieu of trying to scramble money to fix something on the project. Now, not to say that that's going to happen here. There may be some unforeseen condition that somebody buried a highway out there that we don't know about, so.
Right, yeah, you all know.
Where Jim go?
Have you ever worked with our group before?
I have not worked with our group before. I can honestly say that I have not worked with any other contractor on the list other than DC Bass personally.
Thank you.
Ted. The lighting, the lighting business that he's dealt with, or talks about, have you dealt with that, that organization at all?
We have not dealt with Qualite. This is actually the first project out of all projects that we've dealt with in the last twenty-five years that, to my knowledge, I've been there for eight years. This is the only project that they've ever requested be submitted as an equal.
And I know that you have a lot of faith in, in your other lighting organization. You guys really brag on that.
And it's not to say that there's wasn't an equal or we wouldn't have approved it as an equal. It's, we have the knowledge, the background. Our electrical engineers have the knowledge and background. As I said, it's nothing against him or his product. It is something that they just haven't been involved in the projects that we've worked on.
Were the comments concerns or questions?
I have a concern. We, recently, as all everybody knows, we have a, there's a petition out to go to vote for this ballpark. And if that goes through, won't this be money that we may or may not be able to recover?
That's not the question here. I mean, that comes up. Those comments will need to be addressed later.
That'll be number twelve?
Yeah. Thank you. Any other comments for our, our design engineer or landscape architect? Thank you, Jeffrey.
Thank you.
We're going to item eleven. I'm going to ask our, our chief financial officer to help me with this after I read the title. Consider creation of the Perry Sports Complex account within the Perry General Fund. Receiving funding of one million four hundred seventy-five thousand dollars from PMA. Received funding from PMA at two million sixty-five thousand dollars revenue bond series two thousand thirteen and two hundred fifty thousand from PMA reserves and deposit such monies in the Perry Sports Complex account. Approximately a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from the two thousand fourteen General Reserve, General Fund Reserve balance and transfer such monies into the Perry Sports Complex account. Since I'm a surveyor, I'm going to ask Mr. Mason to help me.
Just kind of a, a quick rundown of exactly what, what those numbers are and where they come from. As you remember, back in August of two thousand thirteen, we went out and issued the bonds. PMA with our hotel motel tax proceeds. We had outlined some projects within there. In those projects outlined were the purchase of the property. Likewise, we also had the ballpark money in that piece. At that time, we told you that we had planned on transferring about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from PMA as part of the overall game plan to fund the ballpark piece. In looking at the, in looking at where we are today, so that, that goes the majority of the numbers that, that you're looking at there. But in coming together then on the final piece and in order to make sure that we have enough cash appropriated to cover those pieces, Mayor, there, I think there's an updated agenda that, that you're not reading from. We would need two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars of general fund appropriations from our carryover fund balance in order to finish funding the rest of the ballpark. That two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, there's a couple of options that, some value engineering you heard mentioned earlier and a couple of other pieces that we would be looking to maybe to reduce that. But based on the bids and making sure that as we get to item twelve and we do what we do, we, we have to have enough money in there to cover the bid award that we're going to do if you choose to do it item twelve. And to do that, I need to set aside another two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars of carryover fund balance from last year. If you'll remember, after appropriations and after where we were, Mayor mentioned last time, we had about two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars on the carryover number. And so we would be using part of that number, part of that two hundred and seventy-seven to fund this last piece.
I have a question. Why would the access road in the on cue property line be put into the sports complex?
If I may answer that.
Yes, you may.
And, and go on. The, the on cue property piece, we had already paid for out of some excess hotel motel tax accumulations that we had. So at that point, whenever I, back to a treasury function of the city, whenever I looked at the interest earnings that we happened to be making at the time on our bond funds versus what we were making with the cash saved in the bank, made the determination that we were still a little bit more in interest there. And so I chose. And so I chose not to pull those funds out. And so therefore, that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we'd spend out on hotel motel tax, which we were going to originally appropriate then into the ballpark complex. So that is why that was there. The access road, based on the latest engineer's estimate, has been decreased down to about five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. In addition to that, we do have, and we have continued to build over the last three years, some reserve money in our street sales tax piece. So between the engineer's estimate, which is what we have lowered this to, but considering as a contingency, the extra money that we have set aside in our limited purpose street sales tax, I think we will have enough money from that bucket to take care of the commercial part where we had what we planned on doing there. So that is why we freed the money up from those buckets and have put it in then to what you see presented to you tonight.
Well, I was just wondering why you wouldn't pay that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars back since you borrowed it out of, correct? You borrowed that money? Why wouldn't you just pay that back to where you borrowed it from our sales?
Well, we didn't borrow it. We had, at the time of the purchase, we had the extra cash on hand, so we didn't, we didn't borrow it. It's hotel motel tax money at this point that we're saying effectively is going to continue to be spent on an economic development item. And that economic development item is the ballpark.
Does everyone have item eleven? I'm going to read that again to make sure we get it recorded into place. Item eleven, consider creation of a Perry Sports Complex account within the City of Perry General Fund. Receive a funding from one million four hundred seventy-five thousand dollars from the PMA. Two million sixty-five thousand dollars revenue bond series two thousand thirteen and two hundred fifty thousand dollars from the PMA reserves and deposit such monies into the Perry Sports Complex account. Appropriate two hundred forty-one thousand from the two thousand and fourteen general fund reserve balance and transfer such monies into the Perry Sports Complex. Everybody reading it the same way?
Uh huh.
Okay.
So what's the total amount, Russ?
One point nine six, six. One point nine six, six, yes. Million.
But that's not all for the ballpark. Is that correct? That's to cover on cue property, that's to cover what's listed here, access road and all, is that correct?
No, that would be for the ballpark piece. We still have set aside, and monies we would still have available would be five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, still say in our bond fund, available to do the access road. We've already purchased the on cue property. Those funds have already been expended, so we don't have that piece to worry about as an expenditure anymore.
I think it's appropriate to ask Jeff, with respect to value engineering, do you have an estimate of where you could take that, one point nine six six?
I do not off the top of my head, but there are items that, you know, during the bidding process that I spoke with a couple of the contractors that we probably could value engineer a few items like the asphalt parking lot and drive to use concrete in lieu of that. That could save anywhere from maybe thirty to fifty thousand dollars. You know, depending on the sports lighting route we go, that can possibly save some money. There are some other items in there that we could possibly value engineer to save some more money, but I could not put a dollar amount on it without going to a contractor and saying, can you give me prices for these items?
Okay.
Because it could be one thousand dollars, it could be a hundred thousand dollars. It just depends on what prices they want to give.
Does this bid include the asphalt road from fur?
It'll include asphalt road from fur to the first entry of the parking lot, so that there is one fully paved access to the parking lot. And that bid includes all four, spill, all four sports fields would be let, your maintenance or storage barn would be built, and fully irrigated fields, everything. That includes all items that were designed.
At one point, we talked about leveling some area off south of the ball fields?
It levels a little bit of that area off, but not much due to cut and fill calculations unless you wanted to bring in or haul off dirt from the site. That's something that we can negotiate with the contractor to flatten out an area a little bit better, but for drainage purposes and for cut and fill calculations. Right now, we do not have that completely flattened out into a ball field per se.
So we don't know, say, bring in or haul off? We don't know which one?
Right now, we will balance on the site. If we start cutting or filling in that area because it hasn't been graded and determined whether we would have to do that, that would be something that would have to be looked at.
That's additional. Any other questions or concerns?
What happens to this money if they do go to a vote and they vote it down?
Well, we still have other items on here we'll still be working on. And there's a lot of things we can do.
Yeah, I mean, it's still to be used.
Yeah. That'd be something to bring before the council and say, can we use it for this? Or do we need to go to the voters?
I make the motion we create the sports, the Perry Sports Complex account.
Second.
We have a second? Motion and second?
Excuse me, excuse me, is the motion for the entire item or just the creation of the Perry Sports Complex account? Or everything that's in the item?
Everything that's in the item.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure that the record reflects that.
Do I need to read that into the record, you think?
No, no, I just think that, and who made the second?
Good.
And do you, everything in the item?
Good.
Okay.
Stroller?
Yes.
Dow?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Wade?
Yes.
Warner? No. Johnson? Yes. Thank you. Item twelve. This item is to award base bid and specified add ordinance desired to DC Bass Sun's Construction Company as the lowest responsible bid. You've heard the, and heard the accumulations of the bid tabs, and there is a recommendation letter in here, and we need to take appropriate action as to the award of this bid or not.
I'd still have to have, like, question and answer. If this goes to a vote, what will happen to the money that we've already spent?
I would say that and then we as a council would take other actions. We deem, we deem necessary.
But what if we have a bid with them, do we still have to pay them?
If they're working and moving dirt, yes.
Well, then I make the, I'd like to make a motion that we table this until we decide how it could, going to come for, before a voter.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
And I think it's very irresponsible for us to do this and have all that money spent. We're supposed to be working for the piece. I mean, if you want this ballpark, we're not voting it down, we're just putting it up for a vote.
Okay, my question, my question is before, I mean, honestly, I'm a hundred percent in favor of building ballparks. I think that it's a great thing. But at the same time, I want to make sure the petitions that is out there from, before I say, yes, let's move on, or I say no, I want to know what's the, where, from our legal advice here, where do we stand with that? If we say yes to this tonight, does that petition that's before us right now, does it have the potential to stop this project? That's what I need to know.
Bryce, can you answer that? And the answer to that is no, it does not. The petition as submitted will not stop the project. In fact, the petition as submitted will never allow a public vote on the question.
Are you saying the petition's invalid?
Yes, I'm saying that the, that the petition as submitted does not comply with law and it will be found, we're not finished with all the calcul, all the calculations, but it will not be found to be in compliance. It will be found to be insufficient.
And why do you say that?
Well, my answer will be, it'll be detailed in the, because, you know, the duty here is, is that the public submits the petition and the ballot title to the clerk, which occurred. And then I had the duty to rewrite the ballot title, which I did. And in that rewriting the ballot title, I said, I'm not making a, a comment on the, on the sufficiency of the petition, but that will be made at the proper time. Now, I will note that, you know, a number of registered voters, and I didn't count them, but it's certainly enough signatures to invoke a, an initiative petition were included. But the petitions which were circulated are not sufficient in form, in substance, and this really isn't my opinion. When I write it, I will detail out chapter and verse, actually, it'll be statute and verse, why it's, you know, why it's insufficient. And there are at least three bases, okay? In addition to that, it's, it's, the larger issue, and this is one where people could have different opinions, okay? On the, on the, on the three things, there cannot be another opinion, okay? In my opinion, there can't be another opinion. But, but on, on the other thing, there could be different opinions, and that is the whole issue of initiative petitions, okay? The way, the way power is handed out in a charter form of government, really any municipality, is that the, the city council is granted a legislative power, executive power, and administrative power, okay? And the power of the initiative or the right of the public to initiate legislation and to make charter changes, because the statute is both to initiate legislation and to make charter changes, lies only to the legislative authority and not to administrative or executive authority of the city council. Now, those to you, you know, are just words, you know, legislative, executive, administrative. But, but there's a whole line of cases that the Oklahoma Supreme Court has considered, and they're the ones that, that consider it. There's recent cases, there's old cases. And the question is, does the power of, of the initiative lie to the location of a field or whether a field gets built or whether a field is maintained? Is that a legislative decision or is that an executive or administrative decision? And, and on that point, I believe that it is an executive or administrative decision and not within the power of the, of the initiative, okay? Now...
But they weren't really asking for that. They were asking to bring it through.
Yes, and, and let's point that out. We have received petitions signed by registered voters in more than the requisite enough asking us to bring it to a vote. There are, interestingly, other cases that have gone to the Supreme Court where the facts are so similar, it's, it's almost scary. But, but, but in those cases, and in fact, in many of those cases, the court started to examine, the, the city found that it was not a legislative function and it was executive or administrative, and the, and the Supreme Court, for another reason, didn't rule on that issue, but ruled against it for another reason. So it's not novel, it's not a novel issue. The public does not vote on everything, okay? They cannot initiate everything. They have to initiate legislation, okay? And it has to be, it, it has to be, well, legislation that is issued, and this is not a legislative act. This act on spending dollars to build a ballpark in a location is not a legislative act. Now, now, is it possible that something could be written in the future? And more than that, is it possible that someone could have a different opinion than me? Because I did tell you on this issue, you know, there, you know, there could be a different opinion. And I would say certainly, I mean, the, the final opinion in most of these cases is given by the Supreme Court, you know? I mean, it goes from the opinion of the city attorney to, if they appeal it, to the opinion of a district judge, and from there, it goes to the opinion of the Supreme Court. I'll tell you that I've had other initiative petitions which, which have been turned back on the same argument, that it's not legislative, it's administrative or executive, and I've won those at trial, and then I've won those on appeal in either the Court of Appeals or the Supreme Court. But, but every issue is a novel issue. See, there's just some power that is given to the, to the council, because, you know, what we are is a representative democracy, you know? The people pick the representatives and the representatives make, you know, some decisions. However, on issues of legislative matter, that power is reserved to the public, but that has to be what they're exercising. So in answer to your question, no, this petition will not, will not succeed. Now, until we publish the, you know, until she finishes, she has to review the signatures. I mean, she's, she's done the count, she's run it against the total, and, and she has to review the signatures. One of the other problems is they didn't have addresses down. So like, if my name's Robert Louis Stevenson, but I sign it Bob Stevenson, and I don't put an address down, then is that Bob? Is that Robert? Is that, you know, who is that? You'd think maybe this is a small enough town that you would know, but, but you don't know in many instances.
Not even so. There was plenty of signatures on it. There was three hundred and ten signatures, which is almost as many as voted the last election.
Yeah.
And I, to me, you know, we're, we're a council here of eight people, and if there's three hundred and ten people that think it needs to go to a vote, then I think it should go to a vote, because we're here to represent them.
Yeah, and, and I'm only speaking to the, to the legal issue.
And I'm not saying we don't build the ballpark. I'm just saying, put it up for a vote, because there's a lot of people out there that are pretty hot about this.
Ted, can I assist them?
Yes.
I've talked to some people that's on that, on that petition, and they signed it believing that we were building the ballpark.
Well, they can, people, they can vote that way, you know?
Well, I'm just saying, not all those people on that petition are against the ballpark. So don't, don't, don't act like that that petition, everybody on that petition is against the ballpark, because they're not.
I didn't say that. I said they want to put it up for a vote.
And a couple I talked to said that they thought they were, they thought they were signing it so that we would do it.
Yes.
Because they thought that, for whatever reason, they felt, didn't know what was going on, and just thought that they were signing it so that we would build the ballpark.
I didn't go out and get petitions. I didn't have anything to do with that. I just noticed that there's a lot of people that, I did sign it. I think I believe in it. I think we're here to represent people, and we're not doing that very well.
Like I said, my big deal was, if it has a chance to get stopped, then I wouldn't, you know, I, I don't want to spend money that could be wasted.
Are we wasting money?
Yes, I don't want to waste money.
We're the stewards of the taxpayers' dollars.
Absolutely. If we're not going to be wasting money here, then I'm a hundred percent in favor. But it goes, correct me if I'm wrong, but also, you know, and some people may believe, may not believe we'll get another hotel, some do, depending on who you talk to, kind of way this whole deal's going with the ballpark. Depends on who you talk to at the time.
Well, on, on that issue, I have emails, emails from the hotel person wanting me to bring the title up.
But what I'm saying on that is, they would not have even, they was not even going to consider this if we wasn't willing to previous go through with the ballpark, too, correct?
Well, well, their attorney wanted to know whether we put it out to bid and whether we were going to go through with it. I can't tell you whether they... I can't tell you whether they would or wouldn't have done it. I will tell you, it was important to them, but I don't know if they would have or wouldn't.
My big, you know, like I said, my big deal, I don't want to waste money, I don't want to start moving dirt and say, "Hey, we just spent X amount of dollars," guess what? But if you're saying that that can't happen, and like I said-
I'm saying that under this petition, I want to make it clear, under this petition, this petition will not survive.
I understand.
Yeah, because the worst thing we can do is approve this bid, enter into a contract with these guys, have them start doing work, and then all of a sudden-
We can't perform our end.
We can't perform our end, and that would be a tragedy, in my opinion.
And I, you know, my challenge is, is I want to get everybody, you know, behind stuff. Granted, that's a huge challenge on this, but we're not doing, you know, when we leave out of here, we're better off to all move into whatever the council, you know, decides there to move into agreeance, and we are not going to do our city any good to keep going at trying to split it. It's just not going to be-
These people are never going to be happy unless you take the vote.
Again, but it's kind of like what Bill said, a lot of people didn't understand what they were signing either. I've also heard that everybody thinks that as soon as we build the ballpark, your utility rates are going up. That's not true, that's not what's been stated.
The other issue that I want to point out is, this isn't for or against taking action on this item, okay? But taking action on this item and picking a lowest responsible bidder does not create any legal rights in the one that gets the bid until such time as you enter into the contract, okay? There are no rights received by awarding a bid, I just point that out, so, you know, between now and whenever you change your mind, then, and you don't enter into the contract, because, you know, the time between now, they have to get their insurance, they have to get their bonds, okay? But if you don't, it's at that point, you know, you've made a valid, you've got a valid contract.
The contract will come back to the council.
Yeah, and that will come back to you, of course.
Tonight, a vote to proceed with this is not costing us.
No. It has no legal, I mean, you're picking a bidder, but you were not obliged to whoever you pick until you sign a contract with them, and then you are.
I have one last comment, and I'll push it. I think that we're kind of overlooking something here. I mean, it's come up briefly several times, and, you know, we talked about building a ball field for our kids to play ball on, and really, deep down inside, that's not what this is all about. This is about opportunity for us to have something in our town, to bring people to our town, to create a base, a tax base, so we can then come here and spend money, and we can increase our tax base.
It's a big billboard.
Exactly. And for years and years, organizations around town have been asked to help out with this, and nobody has got nothing to come to Perry that can create something like this, other than our oilfield people staying at our hotels. And if we turn this down, we're backing up. And I can't believe that someone would be upset with us trying to create something in this town to increase our tax base.
They are.
I just do not-
And they're very upset about the location, very upset.
Okay, but-
They are more upset about that than the money.
Okay, let's stop, okay, before I get really upset. We've been asking people for years to show us the location, and nobody's come forward, nobody.
You could clean up the one that you've got.
You cannot do that.
You can, there's been people out there looking at it.
There's not one qualified person you can tell me that has been out there looking at that, so I don't care. You uncover that dirt out there, and you're going to create a wasp nest.
When you spent $10,000 to hire them to go out there, you never asked them to go out and look at the old one.
They did go out and look at it.
They did not give us a plan.
They, they-
You know, we've had land donated out there, we've got extra land out there that's been donated, free.
But not enough.
It's funny.
It's not enough.
Betty, how do you know? We're talking to the experts of-
I've had people go out and look at it.
Who?
And I've had people say they would go fix it for free.
I'm sure.
And these aren't qualified.
And the thing is, is it's been fixed for free.
That's already been hashed out. We'll talk to you in April.
All right, all right. Before I was interrupted, I was just trying to say, we're trying to create something for our community, something that we can be proud of, and something that's going to create the opportunity in this town we've been looking for for a long time.
Thank you, Bill.
And I'll make the motion that we award the base bid to D.C. Bass and Sons Construction.
Second.
The base, or the base and the add alternates?
The add alternates.
The whole thing?
The whole thing.
Now, before we vote, I just want to be very sure that I am understanding the situation correctly. With this petition out there, you're saying by awarding this bid tonight, we don't, we're not going to enter a contract with them and not be able to spend the money, that's going to come later when we approve the contract, right?
Yes, yeah, that's correct. By awarding the bid, you have not established any rights or any obligations with D.C. Bass and Sons Construction Company. And in addition, this petition, unless you decide to submit it to a vote voluntarily, this petition is written under the process, under the initiative petition process, will never command a vote. That is what I said.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure I was clear.
We have a motion and a second. Now, we had a motion from Betty. Does it die as due to no second?
Yes.
That's what I'm saying.
What was Betty's motion?
To table.
She made a motion to table.
To table the action.
And that was the first motion.
Do we call for a second?
We call for a second.
Okay.
Now, it dead due to no second. Next motion was the bill to approve the base bid specified add alternates, as we might desire, to D.C. Bass and Sons Construction, the lowest responsible bidder. It has a second from?
Brett.
Brett Nation. Roe call please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
No.
Johnson.
Yes.
Item 13. This is one we've tabled twice now, and we're bringing it up hopefully for the final time tonight. Consider approval of an ordinance, 2014-09, amending Chapter 2, Section 2-203 of the Perry Municipal Code of 2012, by the amendment of Section 2-203 entitled, Open Meetings, formalizing the current city policy and practice, that it requires three council persons to place any item of business on any regular meeting, providing for repealer, providing for savings, sparenability, codification, and declaring an emergency.
I have a question about this. Council persons includes who?
These council.
Mayor?
Yes.
Includes the mayor as well?
The mayor can call for an item to be placed on the agenda by our-
Does the mayor require two other people to sign with him?
The way the ordinance is written, the answer is no. It's consistent with the charter rule that says that the mayor can call a special meeting. Now, that's because of the way it's written. I mean, of course, it can be written however the council wants to write it, but the way it's written, we took the charter provision, which allows the mayor, the city manager, or any three council people to call a special meeting, and I just inserted special meeting, or any item of business on a regular, you know, on a regular meeting. So, that's the way it's written.
So, just to, and I'm just throwing this out there, future councils, because this is something that's going to carry on beyond all of our lifetime.
Nope.
Yeah, you're exactly right, man. If with our charter, was it our goal for the mayor to, that mayor position, nothing about personal, of course, mayor position, to be a part of the council, or do we separate that out and have special privilege for that? And that was just a question I had, and honestly, I go your way on it, but that was a question brought to me, and so I thought I would throw that out there.
Well, under the charter form of government, the mayor presides at the meeting, and the mayor makes appointments. For instance, the mayor appoints the city attorney, but it takes all the councilmen to fire the city attorney. I mean, that would be one example. So, there are, so, I guess I shouldn't have said that.
You used a different example.
So, there are some particular things, there are some particular things, but other than that, and presiding at the meeting and signing the ordinance resolution, the mayor is like a member of the city council.
My problem with this is, at a regular meeting, I think anybody ought to be able to put up anything they want to. I mean, I've been here for probably eight to 10 years, and I've only brought things up twice, that I couldn't get three people to sign. And most of the time, I didn't have to, I went to the mayor, or I went to the city manager, and they just put it on. I don't see where this is a problem, having only one person putting it on. I mean, if you don't like it, you vote it down. But that's one of the few things that we have as a council that we can control, is putting something up to be talked about.
I have actually got more comments on this subject of the ballpark, to be honest with you, he's brought to me. And I feel like one of the things, and I work with the board myself, you know, outside of here, and you can have somebody come in here and nitpick everything we do, if we say, just one person, you can, I mean, they can throw on whatever they want, anytime they want, get angry about something, and then they're throwing it on here. I think if you have three people that are willing to sign on with you, I mean, you've got eight or nine, including the mayor, the mayor really likes it, he can just put it on, then, you know, you've got a cohesiveness that's coming. If we have a situation where I can just throw up anything I want, and I'm getting, I get upset with something, and I'm throwing it on there, you can have somebody come in here and do that every meeting.
You can do that, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, I appreciate that, but I don't want to sit here through all kinds of meetings where you're allowed to do that.
Where I got kind of upset with this, and this wasn't even my candidate, but her former city manager, every two weeks or so, we were doing the evaluation of his performance.
Right.
I thought that was reckless and ludicrous. If you want to get rid of somebody, get rid of them, you know? Don't drag them through an appraisal every week or so. And it seemed to be that one person could say, "We need to do this," and it was done, at a different meeting every month.
No, you have to vote on it.
We had to vote on it, but still, it's ridiculous to do that to an individual. You know, they had their eyes, they had their eyes in the headlights like a deer most of the time, and so if they can't perform, you're mad at them, don't form, then get yourself and get rid of them, don't, that was, that's what brought this for me, is bringing, one person saying, "We need to do an evaluation of this guy again, we did one last month." No, we need to do one again. Well, how can someone perform their duties if they're being raked over the coals by council every two weeks to every month? I was offended by that as a council person.
Well, hopefully, you won't have anybody in that group.
Because I've been in that situation myself as a state employee, and they didn't do it to us, you've got six months to prove yourself, if you do, you're there, if you don't, you're gone. And that's where I got upset with this, one council person could call for something, and if they got the mayor's agreement on it, it was a done deal for sure then. And I believe that if you have a topic, and you're convinced of it, and you come to me, and I get convinced of it, then we're going to put it on the agenda. But this person, this is the city manager's agenda, it's not the council's agenda. She has the responsibility to manage this city, and she brings stuff to us on the agenda to manage this city. So, it's the city manager's agenda, so for us to oppose on that, then we need to be cohesive in how we do it.
But that person is not here anymore either.
Well, that's true, but I don't want to see it happening again.
We let the people vote them out, that's the way I look at it.
The reason I like this is because, not that this council would do that, but I can see we're future councils, when everybody's arguing with each other, none of us on this side like each other, nobody like over there, and we're all arguing, you could paralyze, you could absolutely paralyze a government by just nine people all wanting to willy-nilly put things on there. And I'm not saying we would do that, but I'm just saying it's possible, and why not prevent that? And if you don't like it, run for mayor.
And I brought this up last time, and I'll bring it up again. If I want something to be put on the agenda, and I can't get two more people to sign on with me, it's not going to pass anyway.
That's right.
That's right.
So-
Well, I don't know, sometimes it's just political, and they don't want to bring it up.
Well, it's still not going to pass. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Motion and motion. Cross call please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
No.
Johnson.
Yes.
Out of 14.
Make a motion to declare emergency?
Oh, let's do that. We have a motion, we got a second. Do we have a second?
Brett, second.
Roe call please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
No.
Warner's?
No.
Johnson.
Yes.
It does not. If there's no emergency-
Democracy in action.
All right. No emergency for that one, folks, it's all good.
Now, I'll tell you, without an emergency, it's subject to referendum. Charter, but just-
Okay, so we have eight here, needed seven.
Yeah, needed seven, it's subject to referendum. I just point that out, since we've been talking about initiative and referendum and that, so.
A little educational, too.
Well, you know, it is the truth, this is legislation, you know?
You said that before.
Remember that.
Can we recall the vote?
No, no, no.
No, no, I thought we could, I thought we could go back.
Is that a question?
But-
If someone voted no, and they-
He can, the person voted no can ask for reconsideration.
Yeah, he can ask for reconsideration.
I ask for reconsideration.
Why do you care? That is the 30th day, you know? Why are you stupid?
Okay, now somebody has to make the motion to approve the emergency.
I make the motion to approve the emergency.
Second.
Democracy.
Roe call please.
Dixie needed some more work.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
No.
No.
Thank you very much, that was an education indeed.
How long Wayne's been waiting for?
Yes, Wayne, here it goes. Item 14, consider approval of affiliation agreement of EMS provider Chisholm Trail Project with Integris Badges Medical Center Incorporated and Integris Cardiovascular Physicians LLC and Quality Cardiac Care Centers LLC. Integris received a grant for medical equipment, or for a medical instrument which can provide EKG of patients and peri ambulances. Wire the information to a top cardiac specialist in Oklahoma City, who will, can convey real-time information and direct to the, and direction to the ambulance attendant to save patients' lives. The instrument, airtime, and all other costs were provided by Integris and their affiliates. The city attorney has recommended some amendments to the agreement, which are simple and standard. The city manager requests the city council approve the agreement so that soon as a minor legal issue is resolved, this technology can be put to use in peri ambulances. Copy of the agreement is in your packet.
No, it's on file.
It's on file.
Because it's like this thick.
It's not possible, nothing.
No. I have a council member looking it up.
I have a council member looking up.
Now, yeah, I looked at it. One thing that I was a little concerned about, I guess it's not a big deal, but it said if there was less than three runs, then the agreement was null and void. How often does that, is that a risk?
No.
Three runs, what, a month or a week?
A month, I'm sorry, a month.
No. No, that's not a risk.
Okay.
Is that correct, Wayne? And we do more than three runs a month.
To Integris?
It's not going to be that many with our run count here.
But it'll be more than three a month, right? Because it said three runs or less, the agreement would be terminated.
I like that.
And I just didn't want to get in the agreement, and then all of a sudden have it pulled out if we didn't make that many runs.
Well, it may be right in there, I mean, I can't tell you how many.
Not that they would, I'm just saying that was one of the...
Well, I mean, Integris has an interest here, you know, I mean, I mean, they have an interest here.
They're wanting us to do it, so...
They're keen to us.
Yeah, they're keen to us.
It's not a big thing, I just was, that's something that, when I saw that, I was...
Well, you're making, I mean, you're making a lot of transfers to there currently, too, correct?
Well, this is going to be to their new hospital.
Right.
So...
Still, you go to Oklahoma City quite a bit, so... So there's a reason that they've asked for this, I would think, totally wouldn't have come out. Okay, again, the recommendation is to approve a subject of minor amendments by the city attorney.
I'll make that motion. Second.
And a second.
Further discussion? Does this thing operate like on a, an air card type thing?
Yes.
I mean, is there a possibility that we could not have reception?
Well, it's Bluetooth.
Bluetooth?
Bluetooth to what?
They can go straight to their cardiologist.
Bluetooth?
Well, it's a modem in the, don't ask me how it works.
It's got Bluetooth to something locally, like your cell phone or something.
What it will do is, they put a modem in our cardiac machine. We will call the hospital to have a cardiac check of certain symptoms. We call home, we tell them we're going to send it, we have a send button on the cardiac machine. We hit it, he goes, "We were on call." He reads it in real time, says, "Okay, yeah, he's having a heart attack, it's going to be canceled." Then they bring it back. So it sounds like it's a cell tower.
Yeah, so there could be a possibility that we'd be out of service, but most likely...
Well, and it's not going to change much. If something like that happens, we're going to do still our, our Perry, you know? I mean, this is happening within the first three or four minutes.
Close the heart. Further discussion? We have a motion and a second, and further discussion. Ro call please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Aye.
Warner.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Item fifteen, authorize head librarian Pamela Riggs as signatory on the Carnegie Library petty cash account.
Move's approved. Jackson, that pulse signal, we're going to get them.
Ro call please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Aye.
Warner.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Item sixteen, presentation of quarterly report of Jason Flaherty, code enforcement officer, direct action as deemed advisable.
All right.
Can I ask you a question before we get started?
Sure.
How did you get number sixteen on this agenda?
Because I've been on the previous two agendas, and for whatever reasons, could not make the meetings for different things going on, so we kept pushing back. So, because I put me on this agenda, and it was going to be long, I kept it pretty short, and I kept off all the code 101 facts that I put on for the first quarter. But the second quarter covers April, May, and June, those months. I did throw some notes on there that were highlights from the second quarter. The spring rains bring, of course, in Perry, the Johnson grass, so... We've had a pretty good issue with Johnson grass growing around town. We have a, I've had a decent handle on Johnson grass, I'm not going to lie, I've had a few issues. There's particular things I have to follow in order to potentially collect money in the future for anything that the city has to obey. So that process has taken its time, and the Johnson grass doesn't wait to grow for my process, it grows anyway. So unfortunately, some of those lots out there have looked pretty bad for a few weeks at a time, or not a few more sometimes, but I think we've worked out most of the keys, and hopefully we'll see all of them taken care of in a timely fashion for the rest of the summer. Swim poles, of course, they pop up in the summertime. Citizens need to be aware that if anything is 24 inches or deeper, they're supposed to have at least a four-foot fence around them. So those are reminders that I stop and let people know about. And another thing I've been working on pretty heavy is the dilapidated houses. So far this year, we've put 36 different properties on notice for various reasons of dilapidation. We've had a lot of success with getting cooperation from the citizens in the town. Out of those 36, 13 right now are being worked on, being fixed up at the different phases of their work that are being done. Sorry, that number was 14. I added 13 new in this quarter. Eight of those 36 properties have been demolished voluntarily or taken down. 13 are in the process of being demolished or taken down voluntarily. And voluntary is the key word, because it's not costing the city any money to do it for them. So far, we've only had to do forcibly remove one of those structures, and I think that's a pretty good number. Other totals from the second quarter, as I figured, the total notices went up for mostly open or high grass and weeds. Open storage, trash accumulation, the junk vehicles, and other misland violations are pretty normal to what I've been working on. And there's a few of the pictures on there that I've dealt with over the last couple of months. And I will say that all of those pictures I put on there have all been successfully removed and taken care of, so that's why I chose those pictures to put up there. The totals, we combined the first two quarters, I've had 117 total notices that I've given out. 69 of those were warnings, five total citations written so far, and 191 different totals when you consider notices violation, or notices, warnings, and all that put together. So it's been pretty active. I think this third quarter is going to continue to be pretty active, as long as we keep getting rain and the temperature fluctuations that we're getting, and everything's going to keep growing, so... And as always, if anybody has any questions about what may or may not be a code violation, contact me at City Hall, I've got my email address, you've got my phone number. I'm always open for people that see things that are violations, that think they may be violations. I don't see everything when I drive around, so call me, let me know. That always helps me do my job, so... There's any questions?
What about the structure at Sixth and Jackson?
Not 100% familiar with...
The house that burned?
I'm in the process of talking with the property owners and trying to help them through the process of getting something done with that. If there's any specific places like that, stop by City Hall, talk with me. I don't want to take up any more time for tonight, we still have to finish up a few things, so...
We have all nine, Jason.
Yeah.
You're the only one that's showing concern about it.
Call me, or come by and talk with me, and I'll let you know where I'm at in the process. That's one thing, I always try to make sure the citizens know that when I stop and talk to them, a lot of times, just because, so while I'm allowing them time to get something taken care of, I still need to be able to let other people know that they're still talking about it, that, yes, we are in the process of getting it fixed, but people still want to know that. Like I said, any specific locations, come talk to me. Thank you.
We're down to item seventeen, new business. You want to need to bring new business before the council.
Make a motion to adjourn and reconvene into the PMA.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Johnson.
All right, we're reconvening into the municipal authority meeting. We need a motion to reconvene.
Motion to reconvene, through the PMA, for necessary actions.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
No.
Johnson.
Yes.
Welcome, authority members.